January 19, 2023 meeting. We have a couple of general business matters. The first is a request for a modification of comprehensive permit decision 14-07 Wyman Village at 19 Cary Lane. Is Mr. Flanders here? Come on up. Any way you want. As you can see there, four of us will all participate. Lorraine, Cam and I will be the voting people on this.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Well, I really don't know what to do other than to let you know that I submitted everything and we're looking to be able to have a hot tub placed on a patio existing at our home.
And you've gotten the approvals from, the requisite approvals from the...
Correct, and all those were submitted.
Okay. So this is similar to last month, the one we had last month. And our responsibility is to determine if this is substantial or insubstantial. If we determine that it's substantial, we have to have a public hearing. And again, there's a protocol to get before us, which, as Mr. Flanders has indicated and the paperwork indicates, has been taken care of. Position I have is this is insubstantial and public hearing is unnecessary. Kim?
I agree.
And Lorraine?
I agree.
Someone will make a motion?
I move that the request be described as...
Being insubstantial and approved.
Being insubstantial and approved, there's no need for a public hearing.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So what we're gonna do, this is short. I told you it's gonna be short. I indicate everybody's gonna be short. We'll draft a quick decision, probably sign it next week. You'll need to file it in registry of deeds. And once you're done with that, you just deal with Mr. Shippey as far as whatever permits you might need. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Minutes from the December 9, 15 meeting. Anybody have any questions or comments?
No, they look at Diana.
I didn't get anything from anybody, so.
Okay. Motion to approve?
I move to approve the December minutes.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We need to wait until 6:05, which is when the public hearing is. So everyone, just please relax.
Do you find the garage?
Probably not, no. Not the new ones.
Sure.
Barney, the garage plans are on the top of Mr. Torazio's. Scott couldn't find his copy.
Just one? One copy?
Yeah, I only made one set.
All right.
I'll give them right back. I just wanted to...
Yep.
I promised to give them back.
So you guys had closed the public hearing for him?
Yeah, I gotta...
Deliberating, so.
Yeah, I gotta...
You gotta take it from there.
Oh, I do have to. Was it 32 by 30?
Yeah, it was 30 by 40.
Right. 28 by 40. I have, okay. There isn't...
He took the...
Okay.
Did you get to see these?
No.
Sorry.
It's right there, isn't it?
Get it on 72 instead.
No, I'm good. I have just outside, so.
Okay, the time being 6:05 PM. We have the continued public hearing. Alexander Terenzio requests a special permit pursuant to the code of the town of Foxborough, Massachusetts, Chapter 275 zoning, Section 3.1.6, Table 3-1, table of uses. Use L.5 to construct a detached 30-foot-by-40-foot residential garage with a footprint of 1,200 square feet. The subject property is located at 83 Beach Street, Foxborough, Massachusetts, in the R40 Residential and Agricultural District. You wanna come up? And the first thing we need to do, because we close the public portion of the hearing, is to reopen it. And at the last meeting, Kim, me, and Dave Brown, who was on, who was attending via Zoom, were the voting members. Dave's not here now, so I'm going to appoint Lorraine to vote on this. As you know, Lorraine was here last month.
Yeah, yeah.
So I need a motion to open the public portion of the hearing?
So moved.
And Lorraine?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you have the, you're on.
So 30 by 40 was a little bit big for you guys, so we dropped it down to 30 by 32. And I attached, everything is pretty much the same, just smaller footprint now. And then there were some concerns about the lumber storage. So my dad was here at the last hearing. He said I could actually use his storage unit, so we can cross that off.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
No bathroom?
No bathroom, no.
No bathroom.
Single-phase electricity?
Yep, yep. Kim, any questions?
So I just wanted to ask, we'd asked this last time, but just wanna make sure, last time you had said this would not be used for a business in order to have any other commercial use.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody in the public wish to be heard? Okay. Want to even motion how to close the public portion of the hearing?
I move we close the public portion of the hearing.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? I have no problem with this. This is now consistent with what we've done in other situations. We do have a list of conditions which are consistent with what we typically impose on matters of this nature, but I have no issues with what's being proposed.
I agree. This fits in with a number of previous decisions.
Okay. Lorraine?
I agree.
Kurt?
I agree.
So let me just read the conditions that I would propose and then ask for a motion to approve it with those conditions. Number one is that the proposed garage shall be a detached structure with dimensions that can't exceed 32 by 30 and a footprint of 960 square feet. Number two, construction of the proposed garage is gonna be in accordance with the plans that you provided. Number three, the garage shall be situated on the property as set forth in the plot plan, the revised plot plan you provided.
Yep.
Number four, the garage is to be constructed of exterior materials that are of a comparable type. Architectural design and color is the exterior materials with which the residence is constructed. Number five, the garage is to be used solely to garage motor vehicles and to store personal property. Six, the garage can't be used for any business or commercial activities and shall not be used for residential dwelling purposes. Seven, running water to and within the garage is prohibited. Eight, electricity service within the garage is restricted to single-phase electric service. Nine, spotlights on the proposed garage and pole lights on the subject property that lead to or are outside the garage are prohibited. You can't have a security light on it, but not, you know, spotlights.
Okay.
Ten, storage of combustible or hazardous materials within or outside the garage, including gasoline and used motor vehicle oil, in excess of five gallons is prohibited. And 10, and 11, rather, the interior of the garage is open and doesn't include a second floor.
Correct, yeah.
Anything else?
No.
Heard anything else?
Overruled.
Okay.
So moved.
Second? All in favor? Okay, so we'll draft a decision, we'll sign it, you'll have to file in the registry of deeds.
Okay.
And then deal with Mr. Shippey as far as your permit.
Awesome.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for accommodating our request.
Yeah, of course. Have a nice night, Dave.
Thank you.
Another minute.
Okay, the time being 6:10 PM. Lamar Advertising requests a special sign permit pursuant to the code of the town of Foxborough, Massachusetts, Chapter 213 signs, Section 213-6A1, Table 2, sign District 1, dimensional requirements to allow the conversion of one sign of an existing static billboard to an electronic billboard. The existing billboard is located at 124 Washington Street in sign District Number 1. We have Mr. Murphy? Did I remember that correctly, Mr. Murphy?
That is correct.
Whoa. Mr. Renninger's not with you.
He's in Buffalo.
In Buffalo, okay. There's a football game in Buffalo.
He's actually going to the Sabres game tonight.
Okay, tell us what you got.
Do you wanna? Yes, sure. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I am Bill Casparo, and I'm here acting on behalf of the property owner Greg Spear on his behalf. I believe, Diana, you have some correspondence from Greg to that effect.
Right, that's what I did, yeah.
So we're here to request a conversion from an existing static billboard sign at that location to put a digital billboard sign on one half of that existing monopole. So here from Lamar is Mike Murphy, and he will just go over what the intent of the application is. So if you have any questions, be free to, he'll answer any questions that you might have. But again, it's an existing billboard, monopole, static, one side facing towards the north will be for conversion to a digital, I believe it's 624 square feet.
672.
672, I'm sorry, 672 square feet.
So the current size of the static, Mr. Chairman, is 672, 14 by 48, and we're asking to modify to a digital 1448 with no increase in size. As Mr. Casparo said, it'll be the north-facing, targeting traffic going southbound at 124 Washington. As our other digital sign is all of them, we adhere to the state regulation of 10-second dwell time. 10-second dwell time, no animation, no moving, no fade-in-out. It's a static digital, as we have at 91 Washington Street and others. It's 24-hour illumination, as I want at 91, and it's really the same thing. So, do you have any questions?
So let me just, what I should've explained, Kurt's gonna be the voting member.
Okay.
Kurt being in Lorraine. So let me just open up the questions from my colleagues.
I have no questions.
Sorry, did you say?
Kurt's voting.
Kurt, Tim.
I'm saying Kurt, Kurt, you and me. I'm sorry.
Okay, I was gonna say, that's fine, Lorraine can have it if she wants.
Got too much on my mind today.
Okay, sorry. That was my question.
Okay. Kurt, any?
For my, it's straightforward enough, it's the same-sized billboard as existing billboard.
Right, there's no increase in size, it's just the same.
I presume any of the typical restrictions of the town always...
Correct.
We've got a long list, yeah.
ESA agreement.
Yep.
The mitigation.
I have no questions beyond that.
So I got a question for Scott. Everything is, they took care of the problem that we had originally?
Yes. Everything was closed out.
It's the requisite distance it should be?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
Good.
Appreciate your help there.
Okay, so, is anybody in the public wish to be heard on this? Nobody on Zoom. Yes, go ahead, sir. And just tell us your name and address.
And can you...
You have to come up here, please, or at the podium.
Paul Morrison, South Grove Street. How much is the town getting from this sign? What kind of fees?
Do we know?
I do not know. There is a requirement for a mitigation agreement. That is dealt with, I assume it's with the town manager. I have never asked what the town receives. That's really not our issue. Our issue is just to approve the or deny a billboard request.
Well, I think it should be put on hold until we find out. Now they're changing the sign to digital.
Mm-hmm.
So that's a change, it should be, you know, the town should get more money. That's how I feel.
Well, there's no...
We're gonna do this, then charge this company here more money.
There's no mitigation requirement for a static billboard. It's only for electronic.
Wow.
So they've had a static billboard that's been approved, 2019, I believe.
So nobody knows how much we're getting the town's receiving.
I do not, I do not know.
It's not that nobody knows, it's that that's not what we do, it's not part of what we do.
Right.
Barney, Mr. Murphy, no.
We can address that.
I can address that. So the agreement that the town manager has with all digitals is 12,500 a year, and the lease terms on that sign is 20 years. So every year it's 12,500. And that was directed through the town manager's office. Well, I think that should be bumped up. We're losing money right there. With the taxes going up in this town, right there.
I think that's an issue you should bring up with the town manager.
Well, town manager's on his way out.
Well, then you should bring it up with his successor. That's not an issue for us. The bylaw states...
Well, you can put a hold on it until a decision is made by the town manager.
I could, but I won't.
Could, okay.
But I won't.
You know, I think you should.
Well, thank you very much.
All right.
But I, as I said, I won't. Any questions?
No.
Want to close the public portion of the hearing?
I move we close the public portion of the meeting.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? You know, this is identical to what we did with 71 Washington Street, and the conditions that I would impose are the same as what we imposed for 71 Washington. So let me, let me read them, or let me try to summarize them. First, the proposed sign is going to replace the static sign portion of the existing billboard that faces north on Washington Street. Dimensions shall not exceed the dimensions of the static sign portion that it's to replace. And conversion of the sign portion that faces south on Washington Street is not permitted except upon the issuance of a decision, of a special permit by this board. Second, there's to be no structural or other changes to the existing billboard other than as authorized pursuant to the special sign permit that we grant by this decision. Three, no modification of the sign as set forth in this decision shall be permitted without the prior written approval of the board. Four, the sign permit that we granted, that we are granting in accordance with this decision is specific to Lamar Advertising and can't be transferred, assigned, or conveyed to any other person or entity without our prior authorization. Five, in the event that Lamar Advertising transfers ownership of the existing billboard to any other person or entity at any time after the issuance of this decision, the new owner is required, as a condition to the continued operation of the sign, to obtain a special sign permit from this board and to establish a bond or other financial surety with the town of Foxborough in an amount that the board determines. Six, Lamar Advertising at all times in connection with the operation of the proposed electronic sign is to comply with the respective provisions of the signed bylaw. And 700 CMR 3.17, all of which are incorporated by this decision, by reference. Seven, in the event that the town of Foxborough Chief of Police or Building Commissioner determines or otherwise believes that glare or writing from the electronic sign impairs the vision of motorists on Washington Street or otherwise interferes with the safe operation of motor vehicles, that Lamar Advertising within 24 hours will reduce the intensity of such sign to a level that's acceptable to that town official. Eight, Lamar Advertising shall provide display time on the electronic sign for emergency announcements requested by the town of Foxborough, and is to provide up to six hours per month of display time on the sign for public announcements that are requested by the town. Nine, advertising on the sign of adult entertainment facilities and businesses is prohibited. Ten, Lamar Advertising is to obtain such permit or permits as may be required for the construction and operation of the sign from the Director of the Office of Outdoor Advertising and from the town of Foxborough Building Commissioner. And eleven, Lamar, in accordance with the signed bylaw, must execute a mitigation agreement with the town of Foxborough Board of Selectmen or the authorized designee thereof. That's identical to what you have on the prior matter.
Correct.
I don't believe any others are necessary?
No.
Okay, there has been a bond that's already been submitted to the town, so there is that surety. So a motion to approve with those conditions?
I move that we approve the application with the conditions as read.
Second? Okay, all in favor? Okay, we'll write up a decision in the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Kathleen Saloma requests a variance or and/or special permit pursuant to the code of the town of Foxborough, Massachusetts, Chapter 275 zoning, Section 5.4.2, to allow an increase in the non-conforming nature of an existing single-family residential structure by means of the construction of a 25-foot-by-26-foot two-story addition that will have a front yard setback of less than the required 35 feet. Property is located at 66 North High Street, Foxborough, Massachusetts, in the R40 Residential and Agricultural District, and is not located in any restrictive overlay district.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. So who's Kathleen and who is, you're Kathleen?
I am.
Okay, and you're Ann Donovan, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Wow, what a good guess. Go ahead. Tell us what you're doing. I know you've already gotten an approval from the planning board for the accessory apartment, but talk about this one.
So we need, we need an addition. The accessory apartment contains the kitchen and what is currently the dining room will be a living room, so now we need an additional kitchen on the other side of the house along with a two-car garage, so that... One-car garage. One-car garage, sorry. In order for Anna to not be in my space. Excessively, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. There's a master bedroom going over the kitchen area, garage area, to round out the construction. It is set back further from what the first addition is set back, so we continue to move to the backyards without looking awkward or outrageous.
So you're, you're currently about 26 feet. As far as your front, this would actually be about 33.
Correct.
So even though you're still within the front yard setback, and there still is an intensification, it's less of an intensification?
Yes.
And I neglected to indicate at the beginning that the voting mem, we're all gonna participate, but the voting members are Kim, Lorraine, and me. Okay?
Okay.
So does anybody, and again, the current portion of the house is where the accessory apartment would be.
Correct.
And that, again, has already been approved by the planning board?
Correct.
And Diana, there are no conditions that they impose that affect this?
No.
Okay. Questions?
So you are adding first-floor space and second-floor space. So how many additional livable, habitable square feet are you adding? And what is the, what is the house now?
The house now is approximately 2,400 square feet. And we are adding whatever Joe said. I don't know. Do you think it says so here?
It's math, I know.
Yeah.
Kim, to answer your question, it's in excess of 25%.
Okay, thank you. That's what I was getting.
The assessor's office says your living area is 2,274 square feet.
Okay.
But I think the habitable floor area is less than that, it's 1,667. You're adding, the footprint is 650 feet, so you're really adding 1,300 square feet of gross space, gross floor space, but I think the habitable space, as I calculated, is less than that, but it's over 25%.
Okay.
So, I know what you're getting at, Kim. She does not need a variance.
Okay.
Because she's already in the setback. She needs a special permit for two reasons. Number one is she's intensifying the front yard setback, even though it's set farther back than the houses, and also because the addition is increasing the habitable floor area by more than 25%.
Thank you, you anticipated where I was going.
Well, I did some calculations, and I may be wrong on them.
1300 square feet that's being added.
I'm sorry?
1,300 square feet looks like it's being added.
As gross, yeah, as gross.
Yeah, 25 to 26.
But part of that's the garage, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, if my math is correct, I calculated the habitable floor area of the addition as being 636.5 square feet, and that's 38%, an increase of 38%.
Okay.
And even if we use the assessor's 2,274 feet, which I don't think is, that's theirs, it doesn't equate with zoning, the increase is still more than 25%.
Okay.
So either way, it's, it's still a special permit. I did a lot of calculations, I don't know if they're right.
Apparently.
So any other questions?
I don't have any concerns, questions, really. I mean, you know, understanding that it's more than 25%. I think we're looking to ensure it's not detrimental to the neighborhood, which it is not.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't have any questions.
I don't have any more questions.
Kurt? No questions.
Okay, anybody in the public wish to be heard? Okay, let's close the public portion.
I move we close the public portion.
Second?
All in favor? I mean, we've done a lot of these. You know, she needs a special permit and a finding. There's already a house there, it's already served by electricity, there's not gonna be any increase in any, you know, neighborhood issues. I see no, no detrimental impact to the, to the neighborhood. We do have conditions, but, you know, I think this satisfies all the, all the concerns that we would have in this kind of matter.
I agree. Just looking at 10.4.2, reading down the criteria, I don't see that this adversely impacts the neighborhood or the town. You know, traffic flow, you know, as you mentioned, adequacy of utilities. Yeah, I don't see that this has a major impact.
Lorraine?
I'm all set with it.
Kurt?
No.
Okay. Let me suggest, actually, let's, we closed the public question? We did close the public question.
You did.
We did.
You did.
We did. Okay, my mind's not here. Let me suggest the conditions. First would be that the location of the addition in relation to the existing dwelling is as shown on the certified plot plan. Second, the addition, and again, I'm gonna double-check my math, but I think the addition is to contain not more than 636.5 square feet of habitable floor area. It's to be situated no closer than 33.8 feet from North High Street at its closest point. And third, that the exterior materials of the proposed addition are to be of comparable architectural type materials and colors the existing dwelling. Anything further?
Can you, when you went back, you were talking about your calculations, did you say an additional 636 square feet, because it is two floors, right?
Maybe about 1,300, I think it was.
No, but the habitable, habitable area.
Habitable, right, yeah.
Habitable area.
Okay.
Because again, the garage is not habitable.
Right.
The pantry, I don't think, would be considered habitable.
Oh, oh, okay, I didn't know that.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. I just want to make sure the numbers are. I trust you.
Scott, do you agree with that?
Yes, sir.
Anything else, conditions-wise?
Nope.
No? Any motion then?
I move to approve the application with the conditions as read.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, we'll draft something, we'll sign it. As is the case with the planning board decision, you're going to have to file with the registry of these. Okay. And once that's done, then you're in the hands of Mr. Shippey.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
If you want to.
Enjoy it.
No, go ahead.
But I'm happy to...
Are we even there yet?
Or when we're there?
We're there.
We're there? Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Okay. Go ahead, do you want to say that?
Go ahead.
Okay, I'm just going to read this to save Barney's voice a little bit. So, "The time being 6:30, an appeal by Jeffrey and Sandra Cook pursuant to Section 10.2.2.1 of the Code of the Town of Foxborough, Massachusetts, Chapter 275, zoning..." "...of a zoning enforcement decision dated December 19, 2022, from the Town of Foxborough Building Commissioner/ Zoning Enforcement Officer, stating unlawful storage at 73 Spring Street is a violation of Chapter 275, zoning table 3-1, Table of Uses, Use C.9, Contractor Yard, and D.4, Junkyard/ Auto Graveyard. The property is located in the R40 Residential and Agricultural District."
How many of you are here for this matter? The whole room. Let me just say at the outset that we're not going to make a decision on this tonight. And the reason we're not going to make a decision on this tonight, in order for us to really understand the matter and to make an appropriate determination, we're going to have to do a site walk. So...
A what?
A site walk. We're going to have to look at the property. I mean, I drove down Spring Street, and there is nothing you can really see from the street, so we're going to have to be on the property itself in order to make a determination, which means that we will end up continuing this matter till our meeting in February, which is February 16th, and hopefully sometime between tonight and February 16th, we'll be on the property. I'm sorry, we'll have an opportunity, yes, to be on the property and to make it... And to see what's there and what's not there. So what I want to do tonight is hear from Mr. Shippey, because he issued the enforcement order, hear from Mr. and Mrs. Cook, because they are the individuals who've appealed. I don't want to have every one of you...
I'm going to get up and speak, I think, to neighbors.
Okay, as I said, I don't want to have every one of you, but I'll explain what I want between now and next month before we end. So is Jeff and Sandra Cook here? Why don't you come up?
Can I just say one thing?
Not yet.
Okay.
So what I want to do is have Mr. Shippey speak first to explain why he issued an enforcement order, then I'll let you tell why you disagree with him. We'll probably have some questions, and then we'll decide how to proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This matter was brought to my attention around October, October of last year. I did a site... Not a site walk, but I did the street, and I took a look to what the issue was. After taking several pictures of it, I did meet with Jeff Cook at his property on Belcher Street and spoke to him, and told him about the situation, and I wanted to get it remediated. I explained to him that I need to do a site visit so I can do a real determination of what was there, because what I've seen from the street were, like, sheds that were just stacked right along. There was a storage container that was situated that had a gate on it, berms were pushed against it, and then there was a... It looked like an empty composite tank. I don't know if it was filled with stuff or anything, but I'm not sure. So I gave him some time to sit there and reach out to me, and several months went by, and I have not heard from him, so I issued the letter, as you see before you now.
And again, you've not been on the property itself.
I have not had access to that property at all.
Okay.
So I'm here in front of you today because, obviously, I disagree with the accusations, and I'd like to ask again for how some of the... I was... Well, first of all, I'm here because this has been brought up years ago and years before that. I've had other zoning people out there, I've had other zoning commissioners out there due to complaints before, and I've had the Conservation Commission come out. When people come out and they see what I'm doing, and I explain to them what I'm doing, and they... Once they understand what I'm doing, everything works out fine, and I continue what I'm doing. But when we have... It seems as though when I go into another step of something, and we have, like, a new set of ears or new people in town, and somebody starts complaining, here we go. It starts up all over again. So instead of me just trying to work things out with him on-site, and then everything's good, we keep on going for another year, and then somebody else is complaining, I don't want that. I want to talk to you people about this. I want to, you know, I have every intention to get in compliance if I'm not, and... But I just don't... I just don't want to work through this and have the same problem a year or two from now. So that's the main reason why I'm here, instead of talking to you on-site.
I agree with that.
So would you like to talk about why I'm not a contractor's yard?
Tell us whatever you want to tell us.
Okay. Well, I have the definition of a contractor's yard right here in front of me.
Well, actually, let me... Why don't you tell me what you're doing? Another property is more than four acres in size. And again, it's in a residential zoning district. When I looked at the assessor's records, it said that it's vacant land, land use is field crops. Actually, it says field, CRPS. I'm sure that's not craps. I'm sure that's crops. So why don't you just tell us what you're doing on the property, how you're using the property, and then you can tell us why it's not a contractor's yard or not a junkyard.
Yeah, well, when I bought the property, it was a disaster, and I just didn't slowly improving the land, screening the place, clearing land. But the main thing I've been doing there is I... In the beginning, I started as more like it was kind of... Or a joke or hobby to plant a big pumpkin patch and have some fun with that. And we did that on a small scale for a few years, and it's been gradually getting bigger, and I've been doing it in different places on the land. And then people suggested me, to me, that I apply for Chapter 61 status for my taxes because I definitely fit the requirements.
Have you applied?
Yeah, and we do have Chapter 61. I had a... I recently had a site visit from the assessor's office, and he... Because he received a complaint that you couldn't see any visual farming from the street. So he came down, had a site visit, and I showed him everything we were doing down there. And everything went smooth with that, and it sounds like I'll be moving ahead, doing the same thing, meeting the needs to stay Chapter 61. And I do have intentions of... Well, I am, I'm making my field area. I'm going to make it quite a bit bigger, and that's what I want to do, because it started off as a hobby, but, you know, it ends up being a lot of fun for me and my family and multiple other people, some of the people in the neighborhood that like it.
So what kind of equipment do you have on the property that allows you to do what you're doing?
I have everything that I would need to cut trees and pull big stumps and screen loom and mix compost. Turn fields and...
What would that equipment be for somebody who is completely uncertain as to what they're talking about? What specific items?
A bulldozer, a couple tractors, a forklift, a loader, and a backhoe.
Okay, so I sort of interrupted you, so why are you... Why, again, do you claim that you're not a contractor's yard or a junkyard?
Well, just looking at the definition of contractor's yard is a parcel of land utilized by a contractor. Okay, I'm not a contractor. I don't do any contracting. There is no other contractor renting space or doing anything else there. The land is not used for any kind of storage of building supplies. I mean, the closest I have to building supplies is I have a... I have some cement blocks that I... Sorry, I thought I shut this off. I'm trying to shut that off. I have, yeah, I have a small amount of things that I just use for my personal projects. Any other questions on the... As far as building supplies?
No, I'm fine. Let me just say that I looked like the same at the beginning. There were four of us here, all participate. Kurt, A, Kim, are the voting members. But let me turn it over to you. Any questions?
I do have a question. I do not know what Chapter 61 is.
Chapter 61 is a tax code that just gives me a discount on taxes on agricultural land, as long as I'm meeting current... I mean, a certain status of farming.
Okay, thank you.
And that would be on state taxes, not on federal?
Okay.
I believe it's 61A.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, 61A.
Oh.
It gives them relief on their taxes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Providing I have at least six acres, that's one acre for my house, and five that's for the farm.
And does it have to be commercial farming that takes place to be 61A?
Protoss has to be sold.
Well, yeah, you have to sell a certain amount.
Do you sell protoss?
Yeah, just pumpkins.
Pumpkins?
From that property?
Yes.
And again, that would be the protoss that you actually farm there?
Right.
That you're selling? You're not bringing from somebody else and...
No.
Okay. Kurt, any other questions?
Not if it's time before. I don't really know what I'm looking at, before you see what's going on out there.
Lorraine, any?
No, I think the site visit would be important.
So, Mr. Cook, right? And again, you're speaking on behalf of...
Yes, I'm on yourself.
Okay. And then I know you had a question, but why don't I hit Bill first, if you don't mind?
Mine was more of a statement, like, I'm just going to... We're at 71 Spring Street, directly next door. You have full access to our property, just look at anything that's there. In our house, here on the second floor, you can see it even better.
Okay, and your name is?
Kathy Young.
Okay, thank you.
Bill Cook, 112 Spring Street, and a resident of Foxborough since 1967. I'm going to give you some pictures, so you can understand what's going on. You can look at them, pass them around. Especially, you're not getting a lot of information about what's actually going on.
Are these all the same pictures or not?
They're all different.
They're all different?
They're all from neighbors, 73 Spring Street, that area, 79 and 91, which they have formed together now. I have no problem with them growing pumpkins and squash. I have a problem with a junkyard. He has a junkyard up on his back road at 24 East Belcher Street. When that place gets full, it all comes down to Spring Street. And we have quite a few junks on Spring Street. We have commercial containers, storage containers, three at least. We have a big black water tank, it's probably a 5,000 gallon or more.
It's big.
Somewhere in there. We have cars left and right. We also have a large amount of land that's been filled at least six feet high behind Young's house, behind other people's homes. I've taken pictures of it, and you'll see it's a six-foot wall of fill, which would cause a problem down the road with water drainage. 70 Spring Street, there's a storm drain, and on one side of the street, because it used to flood all the time, they added another one on the left side, and it flows down into that land, and he's actually put a dam there, so that water can't get out of that area. So I really think you need to do a site walk, like you say. And you'll see that Mr. Cook is hiding a lot of things back there. My daughter's land abuts his land, and I walked out there, folded out, took some pictures, and I was amazed at what was back there. I had no idea there was even that much stuff. There's enough sheds, I don't get what you need seven or eight sheds for on a piece of property. Now, this is an R40 area, and he's destroying...
The whole street.
The whole street. I've asked him, I've talked to him a couple of times, and this is the response I get. It's not right. As a neighbor, you should be considerate of your other neighbors, like the rest of us are. We're not asking him to do anything that's unreasonable. We're asking him to clean up his act. We don't want all his junk vehicles. If you look at... Make sure you do a site walk on 24 East Belcher Street, too, because he's got that jam-packed. Do you need a locomotive in the town of Foxborough sitting in a junkyard? I don't think so.
Just to make it clear, that is before the Select Board right now.
Yeah.
That is a different, separate matter right now.
Okay, but it's still a junkyard, and we're not supposed to have junkyards in Foxborough.
I understand that, sir, but that is a different matter that's held by a separate board.
Yeah.
You mean the Belcher Street property?
The Belcher Street property, yes.
So if you take the containers, the Jersey barriers, what do you need three Jersey barriers in your yard for? I don't know. Expecting a locomotive to come flying through? Expecting a locomotive to come flying through there, and you got to stop it or what? I don't know. But there's a lot of stuff going on there, and I think it needs some consideration from the town. I don't know what these people are paying. I'm paying $8,200 a year for taxes. And I have to walk by that and ride by it every day of my life. And back in 2010, when Bill Gasparo was the building inspector, we sent a letter to him. And it's only gotten worse year after year after year. So picture back to 2010, picture what it's like now. In the middle of the night, he goes out there and moves stuff around like he's cleaning the place up. Sundays, he's running his excavator, dozes. It's just, for what? Now, God only knows what he's got buried underneath all that fill there. Because there was never a plan given to the town. There was never any engineering documents given to the town for all the work he's done there. He's stripped the land of just about every tree. And he's continued to do it with the apartment house he owns now, too, on Spring Street. So he's got everything connected together, and he just keeps going from one to the other. All of a sudden, he puts a big storage container on 91 Spring Street. For what? What are you storing? I don't get it.
So why don't we do this? You're saying A, he's saying B.
Yeah.
We obviously have to go out to the property.
Yes.
So...
I would like that.
Okay. So here's what I'm going to recommend. You can sit down if you'd like.
Thanks. By the way, I don't wish these two any harm.
I'm sorry?
I don't wish these two any harm. I would like to be good neighbors. Everybody would like to be good neighbors.
So here's what I would recommend, unless somebody has some other recommendation, is we pick a convenient date to do a site walk. It would obviously be convenient with us as well as you. What I'd like from you is an inventory of the property, of the personal property you have on, the real property, that you're utilizing for your farming purposes, as well as other structures that may be there. So when we go out on the property, we can ask you a question. What is this being used for? What is that being used for? And as far as the public, because again, I'd like to, when we come back here in February, avoid hearing everybody saying the same thing. If you could help us streamline the situation by putting on paper exactly what your concerns are, and everybody can sign it, and then I think what we could do is ideally just ask questions off of that. I think that would allow us the best and most efficient way of addressing the issue. Any other questions, comments?
No.
So if you can give us an inventory, you know, you can get it to Diana, say within... Well, let's pick a date for a site walk. And obviously, we're going to have to be concerned about potential weather. I think winter might come at some point.
At some point, yeah.
So... What's good?
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah.
How soon are we going to do this walk?
We're picking that up.
We're trying to figure it out now.
Okay.
I mean, certainly before February 16. With the exception of Tuesday mornings and all day February 8, my schedule is relatively good.
Well, are we interested in having the inventory of personal property before?
Yeah.
We go? So we need to give...
We need to give Mr. Cook some time.
Mr. Cook some time. So that would say to me perhaps not going out next week.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So should we possibly consider the week beginning Monday, January 30th?
Or?
Perhaps?
Or the week of February 6.
That's fine, too.
And again, the only day that week, you know, Tuesday morning would not be good, and any time on Wednesday would not be good for me.
Wednesday is bad for me as well.
It's not good for you?
I have training that day.
Okay. And you're not here on Fridays?
Correct.
February 2nd is not good for me.
I'm sorry?
The 2nd of February is not good for me.
So I'm looking for either the 6th or the 9th?
I'll, just so you know, I'll be away.
Yep.
But I'll be dialing in, I'll be calling in to the February 16 meeting.
Okay. February, for the site walk, February 6 and February 7 would work for me. Did someone already say Tuesday doesn't work?
Tuesday doesn't work for me in the morning.
Okay, sorry.
But any time on the 6th would be good for me. If that's good for you.
On Tuesdays, so I'm good. I'm here till 7 o'clock on Tuesdays, so...
How does the 6th sound?
It's a Tuesday?
6 is a Monday.
6 is a Monday.
I mean, I'd rather not a Monday or a Friday.
You'd rather not Monday or Friday? What about...
Yeah, not a Monday or Friday.
Okay, what about either the 7th in the afternoon or any time of the 9th?
What's the 7th? Is that a Tuesday?
Tuesday?
Yes.
And I could probably be there by around 1 o'clock?
Sure.
It okay for you?
We're talking about the 7th, right?
Yeah.
The 7th at 1:00? That sounds good.
Kurt, is that good for you?
Yeah, that should work.
Can you give, again, I'd like the inventory before then, so that when we walk the property, we have it, in case we end up with a snowstorm that day? Or even if the, even if before that, and the ground is completely covered? Would you make sure that Diana has your telephone number? So if that morning something comes up, you can call me, or you can call Diana, or I can call you and say, "We're off. We're going to pick another date."
Okay.
But as of now, let's say the 7th at 1 o'clock. And we would continue the matter until February 16. Diana, do you have the form?
No.
No.
I can go get it.
You want to go get it?
Yeah.
Can I? I do have one question. So we may have some snow cover. Obviously, we don't want to have snow cover. But is there any poison ivy? I need to know that.
I don't think it would be a problem. I don't.
Okay.
You know, walking through brush, and it's just...
Okay.
It steer you away from the woods.
Yes. It's my favorite question with sidewalks, poison ivy. Have to avoid it. So, okay, thank you.
So what I'm going to do, once Diana comes down with the form, is ask a motion to continue this matter to the 16th of February. We'll probably put this first on the docket that night. And hopefully, by that point in time, you know, with the site walk, most, if not all of our questions will be answered. And then we can come back with a decision. You have a question?
Yes, are you expanding the scope of the review of the property? I mean, I know the mission, what's on the table right now is the junk, but is the property going to be reviewed with other things? He's got structures on the property. I don't know, permits have been pulled. I don't know if they're on the setbacks or in line with what's compliant. Are you expanding the scope here? Do we need to invite another member of the town to also be in that assessment of the review of what's going on in the property?
The...
I have some concerns about any building or what's going on there, whether or not proper permits have been pulled, of what's going on with construction. We have a lot of heavy machinery that's going on there. Weekly, I don't know what's happening, but in the end, when I go to the building office, I ask if any permits have been pulled. They haven't have any, but there's a lot of things going on in that area. So I would ask to extend the scope to make sure that we're compliant. I have nothing against these individuals, other than we want law-abiding citizens in this town. We abide by the laws and the compliance and zoning laws. I expect everybody else to do the same thing. So I would expect, I would like to extend the scope.
All right. Really, all we can do right now is address the issues of the enforcement letter and the appeal from that. So if there are any issues relative, well, if property's over four acres, there's not going to be any setback issues, I don't believe. So, you know, those are beyond this particular matter. I can only deal with what's before us. But the reason I want an inventory of equipment that's there and structures that are there is to get a better sense as to what he is and isn't doing. Okay?
It just seems like a lot of things are trying to be hidden. There's like a 20-foot fence above our fence. So it's like trying to hide a lot of things. So I'm, we're just wondering.
And I think the site walk will show us what, you know...
Again, you have access to our property.
What we need to say, what we need to see, so...
So what required by law to make decisions within a certain period of time on any matter that comes before us? This basically, I'm going to ask for a motion in a minute to continue the matter to the 16th. But this would be your consent to agreeing to continue this hearing until February 16th and to add another month to when we need to reach a decision on it. Okay? So if you would sign it?
Mr. Chair, can I also make a suggestion?
Sure.
That the walk, the site visit, is only by members of the board and myself. It's not going to be open to the public.
Yeah, let me add to that. You know, a site visit is just that. It's a reconnaissance mission. It's our opportunity to see what's there and what's not there. We don't make any decisions when we do a site walk. We ask questions, we gather information, and then come back here to make a determination. So not only will we not be making a decision or making any decision at that point in time, I think for the matter, for the basis of efficiency, it would be appropriate for just us and Mr. and Mrs. Cook and Mr. Shippey to be there. Thank you, at that point in time. So, a motion?
Yes.
To continue?
I move to continue this to our February 16 meeting.
Second.
Okay. All in favor? So we will see you on the 7th, weather permitting, and then again, on the 16th here. Diana, probably first one out the docket?
All right. Yeah, yeah, I'll do the continuation first.
Yeah, so we'll probably have this one at 7 o'clock then. Okay, thank you very much. All right, what I want to do right now is to take a five or 10-minute break before we go on to the next matter. The time being, 6:40 PM, we have the continued public hearing. 119 Moore Street Realty Trust requests a comprehensive permit under the local initiative program pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 40B, Sections 20-23, to construct 52 condominium residential units, 25% of which will be affordable to households earning not more than 80% of the area median income. Property situated at 119 Moore Street in the General Industrial District and is in a future Aquifer area overlay district. We have some administrative matters that we need to take care of first. First, an update since the December 15 hearing session. And after I read this, I'm going to ask for a motion to enter all of these items into the record and waive their reading. So receipt of additional materials, all of which are on the town website. January 8, 2023, letter from Carl and Kathy Vandenboom. Respective January 10, 2023 emails from Jessica Uth, Laura Smith, Anne Marie Anderson, and Barbara Pacini. January 12, 2023, email from Mark Lamson. January 12, 2023, letter from Alice and Harold Berberich. January 13, 2023, letter from Joan Gallivan. Respective January 13, 2023, emails from Deborah Werns, Mike Ruo, Tricia Slattery, Lisa Pereira, Shoshana Hutchinson, Melissa Davis. Respective emails with miscellaneous dates from Elizabeth Vandenberg, Chris and Mary Bailey, Susan Brown, Maureen Serge, Susanna and Peter Pascucci, Alexis Deal, Russell and Donna Wood, Donna Lane, Kathy and David Young, Vincent Riccio, Bill and Dottie Cook, Bill Feeny, Tim Cass, Joseph Snow, Kathleen Belial, Peter and Jennifer Fitzgerald, Barbara Padago, and Chrysanthem Pappa, Michelle Crockford, Teresa Howe, Jan Close, Denise McCallum, Mark Conley, Harry Payne, Teresa Payne, Terrence Lyons, Shane Vandenboom, George and Carolyn Bodenberger, Marcia Kidd, Carol Marland, Raymond Lyons, and Karen LeBlanc. A letter dated January 17, 2023, from Tom Hunt. An undated letter from Tom and Valerie Garcia. Respective January 18, 2023, emails from Angela Vandenboom, Jim Fortune, Kathleen Demoro, Jenny Mayhew, Phil and Joyce Embaro, and Lynn Davis. Respective January 19, 2023, emails from Lisa and Jim Duncan, Sandra Cook, Luke Pereira, Victor Pereira, Mark Powers, and Victoria and Lance Vandenberg. A January 19, 2023, letter from attorney Drew Hoyt on behalf of his clients Carl and Kathy Vandenboom. And a draft comprehensive permit decision prepared by Judy Barrett.
I got one more email. You want to add one more?
Go ahead.
Julia and Jacob Mercier received today at 4:12 PM.
Okay. And that's on the website?
No, because it's on my email.
Okay.
It'll get on their website.
Okay. So just a motion to enter each of these into the record and waive their reading?
I move that we accept each of them into the public record and waive the reading.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? That makes 61 items that we've received in the past 11 days and 119 total, dating back even before this application was filed. You know, I appreciate, you know, receiving them, even though some of them were repetitive. But I do appreciate, and I'm sure my colleagues appreciate receiving them. We've all read them, in some cases, more than once. So again, thank you. Next item, we need to approve an invoice from Environmental Partners. This is for the period October 29 through November 25, in the amount of $2,255. Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So as I indicated last month, what I want to do tonight is to provide the public with a half an hour to express whatever you want to express, although I'm going to ask you to please tell us what you haven't told us already. If there's anything different than what we've received in the 119 items of correspondence, I would appreciate just hearing that. And then my colleagues would appreciate just hearing that. You know, I've given a lot of thought over the last month as to how to handle this meeting. In a lot of respects, I think I made a mistake, because I think we're fairly cognizant of what the public's position is on the matter. I did speak individually with each of my colleagues within the last couple of weeks to see if they were still okay with how I want to handle tonight, and they were. So notwithstanding the fact that I'd like to really just go into our deliberation, I'm going to try to be a man of my word and give the public a half an hour, which means we'll stop at about 10 of 8 to express whatever thoughts you want to express. Again, I would very much appreciate it if you would limit it to things that we have not heard before. And then I'll give the representatives of the applicant an opportunity to also speak. If anybody wants to approach us, if not, I would more than, be more than happy to move forward into deliberations. Yes, you have to come up here. And again, just let us know who you are and where you're from.
Mark Lamson, 5A Moore's. And I apologize if some of this is repetitive from other folks. It's not repetitive from me, with the exception of one comment. So I did send a letter in, and I said that I'm not opposed to developing the land. I'm not. I am opposed to, this project is currently proposed. The board does have the authority to deny the application, safe harbor. and, and I think that the density and scope of this project is, is not consistent with local needs. Mr. Buckley himself said in a past meeting, "The site is tight for a Foxborough product." Trying to skip down here so I don't waste your time. The placement of propane tanks was discussed, or there was no place for propane tanks. And a recent design with the quadplexes is close as 10 feet apart. That is very tight, is very dense. It's, in my opinion, is not consistent with local needs. This comment is repetitive, so I will skip that.
Thank you.
As I said, I'm not opposed to developing this land, so this comment, a perfect example of what I think this project could be under 40B is the Wyman Village off Community Way. Incidentally, Mr. Buckley's Bay Colony Group designed that project as well. Wyman Village is similar in 5.6 acres, approved under 40B, 20 houses with 5 affordable. Additionally, I know most people in the room don't know me, but I'm a marathon runner. I spend a lot of miles on my feet on our local roads. I know how dangerous Moore Street is, I really do. The sidewalk issue is important to me. Just wanted to point that out. It's on Environmental Partners' list of suggestions. That's important to me. So to wrap up, you know, we have our zoning bylaws for a reason, for the best interest of the town. I don't see this proposal with its density as in the best interests of the town, and it's not consistent with local needs. Therefore, I'm asking to deny the proposal as currently submitted. Again, I wouldn't be opposed if it was something more similar to the Wyman Village. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Paul Morrison, South Grove Street. I too suggest that you deny this, because you know what would look better on that plot? A single-family home with a nice 2 or 3-car garage. There's a barrier on that street, if I'm correct, okay? How are you going to put a sidewalk there? You're not. And if you have people that live in that development, people are going to turn around, they're going to have kids. Okay, where are they going to walk the kids in the carriage? On the street? Uh-uh, that's not going to work. I'm telling you right now, this 40B in this town is getting out of control. The only people that work, make out this, they pay profit taxes and excise taxes, and they get to vote whichever way they want. I'm telling you right now, this is a bad idea.
Can I have one more comment to my previous comment?
Why not?
Sorry. As we're all aware, again, my friend too thought it was. As we're all aware, this is the first proposal under friendly 40B, so we're setting precedent for all future friendly 40Bs. So we really just need to get this one right. And I'm sure you've all thought about that for many hours. I just want to make that comment. We really need to get this one right as our first friendly 40B that's going to set precedent for future friendly 40Bs. Thank you.
Anyone else?
And Joan has her hand raised, too.
Drew Hoyt, 9 Weeman Lane. I also represent Carl and Kathy Vandenboom. Matter of procedure, as I wrote in my letter today, I'm hoping that the board is not going to close the public hearing tonight. I understand you intend to deliberate and, and take some sort of sense of the board vote as to whether you intend to approve or deny, but regardless of that, I hope you will please keep the public hearing open until a draft of the decision is circulated and been made public, because certainly whatever comments you've received to date from the public were, were made without the benefit of seeing whatever it is that you're proposing or considering as a decision, which certainly the devil is in the details and in the conditions. Please don't close the public hearing until the public has had a chance to see whatever decision, written decision it is, that you intend to vote on. That's all.
I think Joan wants to speak next also, so.
Carl Vandenboom, 119 Moore's. First of all, I usually save this to the end, but I'd like to thank you all for your service. Diana, you've been fantastic with us throwing a million documents at you and able to post them up there in a very timely manner, so thank you. And thanks to the whole board, thanks for your service, and thanks for what you do for the citizens of Foxborough. Mr. Chairman, you told us at the very beginning of the process that if we have any issues, to address them directly with you and, and obviously the board. I can't help but think that if the applicant, Mike Sieg, was an unknown developer from out of town, would this same be, committee be as accommodating as, as we've seen? He is, he has not been in attendance since one of the first BOS meetings, and I realize he's under no obligation to be here, but, you know, really? It's, if it's a friendly 40B, he should be here offering concessions to the town, be able to answer simple design questions or density questions, what have you, and he's just not here. In my mind, this is not the way friendly 40B is supposed to work. And in fact, at times, these meetings have the tone of a hostile 40B. Now, according to the local initiative, a local initiative program director at the Department of Housing and Community Development, this is the only project in the state of Massachusetts that's even being considered for a town that's already reached safe harbor. And we're at approximately 13%, which is a fantastic testament to what you've done in the past to get to this point that we're at. There's a reason that this board exists, the ZBA exists, and I believe it is, its intended purpose is to protect the zoning bylaws and not potentially approve all the conditions being proposed by the applicant. How many times do we have to state that we're over the 10% and have reached safe harbor? In reviewing the Foxborough Draft Housing Production Plan dated October 21, '21, it demonstrates the voluntary 40B project is not supported by the town. The community response shows that voluntary 40B came in 14 out of 15 of the possible strategies. In that same report, Table 8, page 97, it shows that the voluntary 40B process was ranked 13 out of 15 for potential strategies. These charts demonstrate that the voluntary 40B development was not one of the preferred choices for town residents, and in fact, the 40B criteria came in at or near the bottom of potential options. I believe that any effort to further exceed the state's safe harbor requirements should require extensive citizen input via a town meeting and a vote by the citizens. Mr. Chairman and Committee, I would implore you to adopt the tactic, tactic of dear old Ben Franklin. When old Ben was faced with difficult decisions, he found a way to help make those difficult decisions by created a weighting, a weighted pro and con list. I'm sure everyone has heard of this. Let me start with the pros. There, there will be 11 or 12 affordable units, which is great. This will get a very highly weighted system in, in the pro-con list. Local preference for Foxborough residents, which, in my opinion, would also be very highly weighted. Increased property tax revenue, which, this one could be a wash in the advent that we have to hire, you know, one additional teacher, policeman, fireman, service. So that might be an even weighting. And the last pro that I could come up with is a handsome profit for the developer, Mike, Mike Sagan and his team. So I'm going to give that one an even weighting also. Now for the cons. Every waiver that has been suggested, and there's 18-plus at, at my last count, that the applicant has been asked to consider, we can consider those a con. In addition to those, I'd like to add, and again, I am being redundant from what people have said and, and written in the letters, the density, we're doubling the population of Moore Street with this one project. The impact to the environment and the wildlife. Proposing ripping through conservation land to loop the waterline, ignoring the MESA endangered species, and carrying utilities above or below the river, not to mention building in a future aquifer location. Some of the project sits in the floodplain, and adding all this impervious surface area will more than likely have a negative effect. This property and mine have flooded more than once, and the bridge that exists there currently, it, it has been under 2 foot of water at, at least twice that, in the time that I've been here, which is 45 years at, at that location. Both the east and west side dams on the Bleachery have been classified with a significant hazard rating, are in, are, and are in need of repair. The Rumford River is a category 5C, which means it's polluted and impaired. And regardless of the contamination results, this is still getting built next to an unmitigated 21-eat hazardous waste site. Who's going to keep the kids from, from going back there? And there are no fences currently, or there are fences, but that, in such a state of disrepair that you can get back there easy. And the gate that's in the back of that property has actually been knocked down for, I'm going to say like 10 years. There used to be, you know, a double-sided gate, chainlocked, and I think with all the ATVs, they just kind of crashed it down years ago, and they still use that for ingress and egress out of that property. Those same, the, the walking plans proposed on the conceptual drawings, they're actually leading you right out to these areas of concern. There are more that I haven't mentioned, but I'll end with the most obvious. Public safety hazard of not having sidewalks on Moore Street. In light of the recent tragedy on Oak Street, shouldn't this be enough to outrightly deny this permit? Please vote no and deny the application. Thank you again.
Anyone else? Yeah, I know, I just wanted to get in the room first. Joan, you're up. Joan, we can't hear you.
I'm unmuted.
Okay, now we can hear you.
You can hear me.
Joan, let me just say, we, we've already entered your letter into the record, so I would appreciate, in fact, I won't let you read it verbatim. I also read your guest column in The Reporter today, which was your letter, so if you can summarize it, that would be greatly appreciated.
I don't think I can, but I do think I've made some different points that I think I'd like to have the public hear and know. And I think all of those avenues, I've tried to do as much as I can, but I think this is very important. And I would like you to let me read this letter, I think I've made some good points.
Joan, I, I don't want, I don't want you to read it. I can summarize it in 2 or 3 minutes, so, you know, you can hit your points and, and make a couple of sentences per point, but you've only got 10 minutes, and, and it's going to take you longer to read it, so if you would summarize it, please?
Do it in much less time than that. So I did send this letter to the board so they would have time to read it ahead of time, and I thank you very much for that, and I'm sure you've considered it. But I did like to make these points because we haven't had an opportunity, and all the meetings that we've had have been very, well, anyway, they, it has not been fair, so there's not been an opportunity, so let me please have this time. Thank you. All right, so the topic in my letter, the first topic that I'm going to address is denial. And I'm requesting that this voluntary 40B be denied. And although the developer has had many changes that they've agreed to, it still will make great changes in, on Moore Street. It's adding to the growth a great, a great, very great deal, and there's a lot of changes that will be coming to this Moore Street area both ways. It's the wrong project in this very small, it's only 2 acres of the 6-acre parcel that is being built on. This was formerly the Willow Grove Home and Nursery down at the end of Moore Street. It's surrounded by conservation land, the Rumford River Green Belt Conservation Land, wetlands and floodplain, and it abuts the Bleachery Pond and the river. That's what we call it, Rumford River and the Bleachery Pond. So it's actually a good parcel to add to the conservation land or the inventory in Foxborough if the developer ever wanted to donate part of this land or all of it. Okay, so I think that it should be denied because we've met our 40B as we, 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 10%, requirement, and in fact, as we know, we've exceeded it. Now, I was on the Housing Production Plan, Commit Housing Production Plan Committee, and they, they also looked at a lot of other sites here. Looks like there are more sites that will be looked at in the near future. So, in developing this land, perhaps sometime later, the developer could put in a smaller development, like, you know, he wants to have the 2-unit condo in this historic building, and then maybe a 6-unit building or 2 4-unit condo buildings. That would be 8 or 10 units, or 8 or 10 families there. And that wouldn't overburden the neighborhood. It would have the potential to avoid the dangerous winding road for fewer children in families and for older folks as well. The zoning board of appeals, that's another topic here, and we all think that you should be serving to protect the present residents who live in both sites, sides of the project. It goes around Spring Street, I think, is where it goes also. And they all believe that, that this is not a well-conceived project, and it's not really a good use of the land. A good project would be more, one that was near the Foxborough Center and near services, near shopping, medical facilities, and especially public transportation. So it's not in walking, this, this, yeah, walking area for any services or any facilities. You can't be accessible from this, this plan. Okay, and it's already been suggested earlier by, when the selectmen were looking at this project, that a good project would need to be located where there's available infrastructure, use environmentally responsible design, and, and the number of items that she suggested. And this proposal doesn't fit within many of these parameters. The actual size of this project, it's now, instead of 52 units, it was being proposed for 46 units. That could have easily 138 people living in these units. That's if they had one child, an average of one child. And many people could have more than one, they could have 3 children. So there's probably 90, 90 cars with 46 units. Doesn't everybody have 2 cars nowadays? And then if there's a child that's 16, that's another car. So the lack of necessities and amenities in these 46 units, and all the issues and obstacles which have been uncovered as you looked at each detail of this project, there were many, many things that were obstacles and that the zoning board of appeals asked them to look at. And of course, that this, makes this proposal even more difficult. Now, there are many opportunities that have been presented through the Housing Production Plan and that are known in town anyway. And I think that's what, I think is important for our zoning board of appeals to think about all the other departments in town and our town boards and how they are going to be occupied. These several, several opportunities and different sites would help the town meet the best-practice strategies and create affordable housing. Many of them are large, they're already in, in the workings, and the town seen these start, and during the time we were doing the Housing Production Plan, we became aware of more projects and potential projects, projects and potential projects and ones that need our priorities right away. We actually can't waste any more time and energy on this Moore Street proposal. It's not even wanted or needed. The most important project I want to mention is, and there's another topic, the Foxborough Housing Authority Walnut Street Proposal. This is the most important and most timely of the housing developments that have been proposed. We've read about it in The Reporter and The Sun Chronicle, that's the only information I have mostly, and I've listened at the meetings. This is a 16-acre property, and although the planning and the costs and the time will be tremendous for the town, there really are substantial steps that have already been taken, and we've seen that there are grants that have been awarded, there are substantial progress has been made, and most of the town departments and the Foxborough Housing Authority and the Planning and Development Department will all be needing the attention and the focus and management in the development of this big, big project. I know it's a Foxborough Housing Authority project, but certainly the town will be greeted in this. There are upwards of 250 units there, and it could address all of our housing needs.
What does Walnut Street have to do with this?
Okay, it's just that our town is going to be needing to address these. We have another, you know, Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40A, and it explains to you that you should be representing the total town, our town offices and the departments. So this MBTA Communities Act is a new thing that has to be dealt with immediately. It's not your particular department, I agree, but the point is, you can take the steps to deny this proposal and let the town have the time to do the research, the analysis, and see what the requirements are going to be of these new things that are coming up, and that's a wonderful priority strategy for us to look at soon. And attention is needed to determine feasibility, as they say, of the town-owned properties, and that's even the Pratt School, the State Hospital, auditorium, Lincoln Hill, and then they have to think about this Schneider property, which has been vacant for some time now. That's going to involve our whole town, and, you know, it's going to have some gargantuan issues. Would you please let the town's departments have the time to deal with this? And as I say, it's been clearly, clearly obvious that people that are around that area and just other interested people in town feel this is not a proper development and will not help our housing strategies or meet the goals without many detrimental effects. So sometime, you may have to face another comprehensive permit, maybe something smaller or less dense even of a reapplication by the developer right here on Moore Street, something smaller, much smaller. But at the present time, this should be denied as meeting none of the needs of the town or our housing priorities. And I thank you for letting me speak today. Thank you for all your work.
Go to the last one.
Anne Marie Anderson, 18 Spring Street, and I know, I've already spoken before and I've written letters and stuff, so I won't say too much, but I just want to mention that, you know, this also, just the human kind of cost of this, you can see all these people who are so invested, you know, all these, all the letters, I was online, just reading all the letters that everyone wrote in, it's just so many. I mean, everyone is so affected by this, and, you know, it does sound repetitive because what we're saying, but what we're saying is because, that's because it's just like so obvious, like, there's only a few, I mean, there's just like a few main points, but they're all just, they are what they are, you know, like, they're, it's like a common sense thing almost. And when person after person after person after person after person writes emails, and there was really no email saying, "Oh yeah, this sounds like a great idea, let's do it," you know, maybe it's just because it's not a good idea, and, you know. I mean, I do, I do, I feel bad for the zoning board because I feel like it kind of got pushed down to you guys. The Board of Selectmen kind of threw it down, and like the Conservation Committee kind of threw it, and like, it's, so it's, I do feel bad, it kind of came at you, and I appreciate, like, Carl was saying, we really appreciate everyone's service here. I know it's a volunteer thing, and we're extremely appreciative of that. But anyways, you know, this is just exhausting. I mean, I'm good friends with Kathy and Carl, obviously, and like, I just see how exhausting this is for them, like, this is just, you know, and I don't know, I don't know what more to say. It's just, it's a lot, and, but anyways, I'm just obviously hoping that you guys can deny it, and I do thank you for your service.
All right, Kathy, you got about?
I'm actually not speaking, I'm responding.
Minute and a half.
I just want to respond to Mr. Brown. He asked what Walnut Street has to do with this.
Actually, no, we're not going to get into that. I'm going to talk about that later. Oh, go ahead.
I can't respond to him?
All right.
Is it okay?
Go ahead, quickly.
So he said, "What does Walnut Street have to do with this?" If one of your neighbors, if Walnut Street does go through, which it's making progress, right, and one of your neighbors moves there and they have three or four acres, this is setting a precedent for what might happen to that house. Is a family going to move in there, or is a developer going to say, "Wow, that Mr. Sage got 46 houses on four acres, maybe I can get 46 houses on these four acres." So you're setting a precedent with this, and I think that Walnut Street has a lot to do with this.
The two bills, do you have? That's about, that's about all I'm worth these days, is two bills.
When, this is just a question, when the board goes into deliberation, and depending on which way they vote, will they be going over the conditions one by one? Do you know? And at that point, will we have an opportunity to, for input, or will they close it? Or have you come to that point yet?
Well, we really haven't come to that point, but my intent is to leave the record open for written comments on the conditions and the waivers. You know, again, assuming that the consensus of the board is to approve, is to
Understood.
Keep the record open for, when did I suggest, to, probably the end of this month, for written comments on the, on the conditions and waivers.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Do you have any other comments, or does Kiefer?
No, not at this point.
Okay. Jeez.
I'd like to move that we close the public portion of this hearing.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
People are going to have to bear with me. So the time has come today, and we can't put it off another day, as the Chambers Brothers This is the, now the opportunity for us to have a conversation, us meeting the members of the zoning board. This is the first opportunity that we've had to sit down amongst ourselves and talk about this project, and then ultimately come to some terminations. So with the public hearing being closed, comments from the public are not permitted. This is just between us. Now, if we have a question for the applicant, that's fine, but comments from the public are not permitted. And I'm going to request complete decorum at all times, no cheering, no applause, no moaning or groaning, no heckling or catcalls as to what we will be saying. Again, it's our opportunity to have a conversation concerning the application, so please, please, please respect that and provide us with appropriate civility to fully and openly engage in a discussion. And any outburst may result in my request that the offending party remove him or herself, you know, from this room. I don't want to do that. I want to have us discuss this with all of you here. So, inasmuch as on the chairman, I have the floor with everybody's indulgence. I see my role as including not just providing my opinions and my positions, but also raising questions about issues for which I don't have an answer. So I'm looking to the four of you to help me answer those questions. You know, as I mentioned in an earlier meeting, our decision must be based on what we believe to be appropriate under the circumstance, stances. It has to be based on the facts that have been presented and on reason, not on passion, not on emotion. From a legal standpoint, we need to balance the regional need for affordable housing, which also is Foxborough's need, with valid local concerns of health, safety, open space, site and building design, and the natural environment. Now, last night, I reminded myself of a comment that our consultant Judy Barrett made several years ago on a prior matter, in which she indicated that zoning boards too often focus only on the applicant and the neighbors. And she indicated that we also need to consider the interests of the development's prospective residents, because they'll be residents of us. So we need to be comfortable, if we approve this application, that we can provide those prospective residents with a healthy, safe, and desirable place in which to live. So let me proceed by just talking about the various specific issues on this application. First, the notion of a friendly 40B, which many of you have characterized both in writing and orally. I don't use that term. I detest that term. There's nothing in the state regulations, nothing in the state statute that distinguishes between a 40B when a town has exceeded or a town is below the 10% threshold, other than the fact that we have a safe harbor defense. Other than that, there is no distinction at all between what people say is a friendly 40B and one that I guess they would say is unfriendly. I suspect that there has never been an attempt by the applicant to reach out to the public, and I suspect there's never been an attempt by any members of the public to reach out to the applicant, and I may be wrong in this, to try to resolve issues and concerns. If that's the case, I'm really disappointed, and I think both parties, both sides are at fault in that regard. Our responsibility, though, is to render a decision on the matter that is before us, and I don't care whether you call it a friendly 40B or not. To me, it's just to make a decision on a request for a comprehensive permit. I look at this as an application for a residential housing development that must be considered on its specific merits and demerits. Recognize the reason it's before us. It's only before us because it's been filed under the Comprehensive Permit Statute and Regulations, and that requires, obviously, that we comply with the provisions of the law. That's something that I believe we have been scrupulous in doing. So our decision has to be based on rational, logical, dispassionate determination concerning the specifics of this proposed development without regard to what may or may not be happening in Mansfield or some other municipality, how other municipalities may handle matters of this nature, the fact, and I assume it's true, that we're the only municipality in the state with greater than 10% of its housing stock on the subsidized housing inventory that's considering an application of this nature, housing development that is occurring in the center of Foxborough, what this town may or may not do with respect to the so-called MBTA communities requirements, the prospective Walnut Street project, which we're going to start considering next month, and to a certain respect, the fact that this matter has come to us under the local initiative program, because it's our ultimate responsibility to make that determination. The fact that the Board of Selectmen may have expressed their support, really, and I give them respect, is immaterial. Like the sign that used to be on Harry Truman's desk, "The buck stops here." It's our decision. All of what I just indicated is irrelevant to the specific issue that we have the authority to decide, is approval of a comprehensive permit for this residential development in Foxborough's best interests, and conversely, are there any reasons to deny it? I think that a development of this nature is in Foxborough's best interests, because I take the position that Foxborough benefits from a diversity of housing options. Condominium development such as this provides a housing option that, with the exception of the Nadya Estates development, Foxborough currently lacks, both as to the type of housing presented and the price points involved. So I believe that the town's housing interests are served by a development of this nature, one that has the added feature of several residential units that are deemed under the law to be affordable. So let me look now at reasons to deny. At the beginning of this process, I looked at the possible contamination of the site as being my biggest concern. That was my principal concern. It would have been my preference that the testing done by Nangle Consulting had been more extensive than that which had been performed, than that which was performed. The results, however, indicated that the 119 Moore Street premises are not contaminated and thus not a hazard to the health of the property's prospective future inhabitants. So together with the recommendation that has been made by environmental partners and seconded by the town's health director, that we impose a condition for an environmental professional to perform visual soil observations and screening for volatile organic compounds during excavation activities, I believe that we are going to provide, if we approve this, a safe environment in which prospective inhabitants of this project can reside. Second is the safe harbor defense. More than 10% of Foxborough's housing stock is on the subsidized housing inventory, and that alone, under the law, allows us to deny this application for that reason alone. In my opinion, that's inappropriate, that is not an appropriate means to deny this application, and I say that for the following reasons. Number one, the town needs affordable housing. That's reflected in the Housing Production Plan, which, I might add, has not been accepted by the town and still remains in a draft form. It's also reflected in the endorsement of this development that was provided by the Board of Selectmen. 10% is a statutory minimum. It's not a ceiling, and this board and any other board in any other municipality facing a similar circumstance is not prohibited from exceeding that percentage. Third, if we are to approve this development, it adds only a very small but necessary increase to the town's affordable housing. Four, the town's actual affordable housing units are well less than 10% of the total, and that's by reason of the state's calculation, numbers closer to 6.7%. Number five, I don't believe a strong and definitive reason has been provided to deny the application on this basis. And I'm concerned that if we deny solely because the town is over 10%, it will be a difficult for us to justify any future favorable and provide any favorable consideration of future comprehensive permit applications. Traffic. You know, I recognize and understand the traffic and safety concerns presented by Moore Street, and particularly its lack of sidewalks. That's an existing situation. It is not caused by this proposed development. Now, it's unquestionable that this development will result in increased traffic on Morse and surrounding streets, but I don't believe on the basis of my understanding of the traffic reports and analyses that have been prepared and that have been entered into this record, that gridlock will occur or that there will be a significant intensification of safety concerns. And let me say as well that no concerns were expressed to us in this regard by the Police Department. It's unfortunate that sidewalks do not exist on Moore Street. It's unfortunate that they end at Morse Place. There are many streets in Foxborough that do not have sidewalks. When Chris Galway was here, he stated specifically in response to my question that nothing is contemplated in this respect due to funding and logistical issues. The proper forum with respect to this issue doesn't lie with us. It lies with the town manager and the Board of Selectmen. As for imposing a condition that would require the applicant to either construct or fund the construction of a sidewalk along Moore Street, we're prohibited by the state regulations. 760 CMR 56.05 8D states that imposing a condition that would cause a project to be uneconomic, including a requirement that would cause the application to, one, incur costs of public infrastructure that aren't generally imposed by any town board on unsubsidized housing or that address a pre-existing condition that generally affects the town or are disproportionate to the impacts reasonably attributable to the project are prohibited. The Planning Board, in its consideration of subdivisions, does not, as a general rule, approve sidewalks outside the subdivision bounds. We cannot do for a subsidized housing project what the town does not do for an unsubsidized Open space and environmental issues I know are a concern of everybody. In my mind, the best use of this property would be open space, a continuation of the town's conservation land. But I think it's necessary that we all understand and recognize this is privately owned property, and either this or some future owner will develop it in some manner at some point in time. I'm not unmindful that development as requested is going to eliminate land that can be developed and used for industrial purposes. Again, this property's in the general industrial district, but nothing of that nature has occurred, and I've got no reason to believe there's any likelihood of something of that nature occurring at any time in the near future. I think that this development will have minimal impact on the town's existing wetlands, the wetlands in the conservation property. I don't believe it directly impacts that property. I don't believe it directly impacts the Vernal Pool. Issues of that nature remain with the Conservation Commission, and I have confidence that the Conservation Commission will explore them and discuss them and consider them and determine those issues appropriately. Let me also note that the Conservation Commission noted issues in their communication to this board that were beyond our jurisdiction, but at no point in time have they recommended to us denial of this project on the basis of environmental reasons. Development density, number of residential units and site designs is, however, a concern and an issue, and that's where I ask for the board's help. There's no question that this is a dense use of property due to the number of its residential units. Condominium developments typically, though, are designed to be dense. I'd like to see a development with less units. However, I don't know what the appropriate number is, and I don't know what the factual basis is to support any number. In deference to the DEP order concerning the riverfront delineation, I would want to see an elimination of Building I, and because of its proximity to the riverfront also of Building J. Beyond that, I'll leave it to the board's dialogue on this issue. This is not by any means, this property is not by any means the Garden of Eden, and I don't think there's anything that we can do that's going to create a utopia and paradise. I think we can have a development here that serves appropriate housing interests and does so in a manner that is not insignificantly detrimental, that's not significantly detrimental to the interests of the town. You know, with appropriate conditions, I would be in favor of approving the project. And again, I do want to discuss more with the board what the appropriate number is. Dave, you want to go next?
Barney's a good speaker. I am not. Just so you know. When this application first came in, and I looked at it, and I was like, you gotta be kidding me. But I've come to be aware that, you know, 40B projects tend to be tightly constructed, and it just seems to be that's the way 40B projects are, at least in Foxborough. And I'll point out the one across from the Stop &amp; Shop. That's a 40B. And it's, believe me, I told the developer I didn't like it, but there wasn't much choice. Excuse me?
Let him speak, please. Again, give us the opportunity to talk.
So they tend to be very dense, and because when they're dense, that creates the need for a lot of waivers, which we certainly have here. So we did discuss, you know, my other concerns, some of my other concerns was access, access by emergency vehicles mainly, but certainly other larger trucks that might go in here to deliver furniture and whatnot. We had the fire chief in here, one of his representatives. They're confident that they will have adequate access for even the biggest ladder truck in the region. So I feel that that's, when we talk reasonable access, to me, it's more about emergency equipment. And it seems like that's being met, as far as I'm concerned, as well as fire protection resources like water and whatnot. So that's, you know, density and traffic. Traffic out on Moore Street and some of the other concerns that have come up, I believe that a project, really, we should focus on the area that it's going to take up and not the whole community. And we've... What's up?
So what's the point?
Wait, wait, wait. Hold it.
No, she's waving her hand around and being distracted.
No, I said before, this is our dialogue. There's no public commentary. If you can't respect that, then please remove yourself. So give us the courtesy. Go ahead.
Teacher at school. Traffic on Moore Street is something that's been that way probably since cows used to be down there. Probably was a cow path to begin with. And to require people to, I guess, I got a back, no, we were, this is what distractions do. The fact that there will be traffic is not unexpected. The fact that there are no sidewalks, it's outside the bounds of the area that the developer controls, and I have always tended to think that we can only really expect the developer to control what they own and not what the public has. And we were told about the cost of sidewalks, it was very much. There are other streets in town that I also believe could benefit from sidewalks. The town doesn't seem to want to do more sidewalks, and I'll say at the last town meeting, there was a, I think it was a citizens petition to have something done with a section of sidewalk on 106, and it was voted down. So it really has kind of become the way the town operates. They're not into expanding the sidewalk system, and I think that's unfortunate, but that's what it is. Environmental. I was very concerned about the environmental, because when we got started on this, we got hit with some report of, I don't know, it must have been 200 pages. And it was, just looking at it would make you, the size of it, but then when you delve into it, it really didn't show much of a problem, if any. So, but then what was really encouraging was when we were able to do that study, and I know it's a limited study, it's not perfect, we could certainly put conditions in any approval to keep something on going, but that report really showed nothing of, in terms of hazards. The few items that were detected were minimal. So I also would be inclined to approve this project.
Kim, you ready?
Yes, I am. I am ready. I just want to start off by saying that I have read everything. I have watched everything over again, and I appreciate all of your comments and input because I think strong and interested parties help us, like sitting where you are, help us make better decisions. And I think that's true for all boards, not just our board. I have one comment to make before I get into what I am thinking about this, and that is that while it is only a suggestion that the applicant meet with neighbors before the public hearing and outside of the public hearing process to address concerns, that ship has sailed on this one, but I would like to tell any future, and I'm very disappointed, I will echo what Barney said, I am very disappointed that did not happen in this scenario. And I would like to tell any future developers, whoever they might be, looking to have another application like this in front of us, the very first question you will get is, what happened when you met with the neighbors and interested parties? If the answer is, we haven't met with them, the next question will be, when will you meet with them? I just need to get that off my chest. You know, that's not part of the deliberations. Okay, so, I have, I keep, after going through everything, I keep going back to a couple of things. One of them is Leah Gibson asking us in her June 28 letter to quote, "Determine if the site will yield a healthy, safe, and desirable environment in which future residents will live." And Barney echoed this at one of our meetings, and he echoed it just a few minutes ago. I keep coming back to this over and over and over again, at 1:00 AM often.
You should call me. I'm usually up there, too.
I'm not allowed to talk to you, Barney.
Oh.
Even at 1:00 AM. So I keep, so the word that keeps coming back to me, the word I keep considering is desirable. So my question is, the main question, I have many, is purchasing a home in the general industrial district desirable? That's my big question. Without a comprehensive permit, residential use is not allowed in general industrial. Our last five, if I have counted correctly, 40Bs have been mainly in R40. One of them was about half residential, half highway business, and one was in limited industrial district. Now, limited industrial and general industrial are very, very different districts. One use allowed in general industrial includes, you can find that table 3.1A1, sale, storage, fabricating, assembly, manufacture, or processing of combustible products or materials which are likely to burn with extreme rapidity or which may produce poisonous fumes after explosions. Now, of course, we already have a residence right now, but is increasing the non-conforming residential use in the general industrial district appropriate? Is adding 40-something residential units to the general industrial district detracting from the general purpose of the zoning bylaws too much? That's my main question. I have other questions, but I'm not sure they're going to be applicable. Well, okay, I'm going to ask them anyway. Is it desirable to buy a home so close to known contaminants even if none are on this Now, is it desirable, well, okay, I'm going to stop there. This is a discussion. I'm probably not done, but...
Keep going.
And I know this is hard, sort of an aside, I know this is hard to sit and listen to this, I know you have things that you would like to say, but we have listened to you, but we have no idea what we have been thinking until the last 20 minutes. So this time right now is very important for us so that we can understand where we're coming from. So it's hard, I know, but please, I appreciate your cooperation in this. So, that's generally where I am.
Okay. So let me go to Kurt and then Lorraine.
I have nothing specific to add on this, other than what you've already stated, Barney, and Kim has stated as well.
Lorraine?
So...
Yeah.
Thank you. So, I've read all the emails and letters and postcards also, and, you know, hear the concerns, environmental, the impact on wetlands and wildlife, hazardous wastes, proximity to a known contaminated site, traffic on Moore Street, the density. The question that I've had is, as I try to envision what living in this complex would be like, how would I have visitors, places for visitors to come to the residence of this site? So it pushes on the density, the way it's structured. I know there's enough parking for everyone and a limited number of visitors, but realistically, I feel like that's not adequate. And I'm wondering if, you know, we can talk about, I think, you know, the question you have, Barney, really about what is that number that makes us work? That's my real question, because I feel like we have to have this be a place where there's no place for overflow parking. There's not a church parking lot across the street. There's not a place on the side of the road where people who don't have an identified visitor space could park. So picture, you know, summers or holidays or anything like that. What's going to happen? So, picture, you know, summers or holidays or anything like that, what's gonna happen? I think it becomes a safety issue. So, you know, looking at density, then, if that can, if that is addressed in a way that might make sense for living in that area, perhaps that allows for better addressing potential impact on the environment. And then, I think, you know, in terms of where people decide that they want to live, well, I think, in terms of the hazardous waste, the, the comment by Molly, you know, saying this was a very limited assessment, particularly for a six-acre property, soil conditions can vary greatly from one boring location to another property, she did make the recommendation about having the environmental professional there. Again, I think it's just making sure that those soil conditions, which could vary, would be addressed during that excavation process if it got to that point, like, so I guess that would be in a condition. Right? So, but then, I think as a home buyer, you make the decision, do you want to live next to a known hazardous site? And I think that's a risk that the developer takes. Are there buyers? But I think for me, it's trying to envision how the flow of these residents and their visitors might safely happen here.
You make a good point, Lorraine, it's hard to know what the exact number is, what's the good number for everybody. It's something I've been struggling with as I've read all the letters.
So, let me, let me try to make a couple of comments. You know, I think the, I don't know why this land is developed, is zoned general industrial. I'm guessing because maybe somebody who's lived here longer than, you know, my 45-plus years, you know, knows, I'm guessing was because the nursery was here prior to the zoning, but I may be wrong on that, probably wrong on that. I think the appropriate demarcation between general industrial and R40 would be the Blue Factory Pond. I mean, to me, it's a natural barrier between, it would be a natural barrier between districts. Regardless, even if it was R40, even if this property was R40, that doesn't preclude a comprehensive permit application. You know, as far as residing at a location that's proximate to a contaminated site, I think people have to make choices, and hopefully they would make choices understanding what the circumstances are. You know, again, there is no sidewalks on Moore Street. I mean, I go walking for an hour and a half every day. This would not be an ideal location for me to live because there would be no place to safely walk. But somebody who doesn't see that as an issue might say it's an appropriate place to live. Somebody who recognizes that someplace off-site, there's some contamination, might still see it as an appropriate place to live. I mean, that's a choice that somebody, you know, needs to make. And whether, because of those circumstances, this ultimately would be a development in which X number residential units are sold is a reflection of the marketplace. Last time I checked, we're still, you know, capitalist of the country, and I think that the marketplace will dictate not only whether people see this as a desirable or undesirable place to live, but whether the price points that we're talking about are realistic. You know, we could approve something, and you find out year from now, two years from now, that it's almost impossible to fill it up as the applicant desires, and that's a reflection of the marketplace. You know, again, I'm gonna go back to the concern that I raised as to, you know, numbers, and I'm not concerned about density per se, I'm concerned about total units per se. And I'm coming to that, I think, from the perspective of the design of the location, the design of the site, and what is appropriate for a prospective resident. And I think a prospective resident would perhaps want a little bit more green space, a little bit more open space, maybe a greater buffer between his or her residential unit and the pond. Whether somebody would find living not that far from the conservation land, good or bad, is another factor. But I, but I think that there are perhaps environmental reasons to scale down the number of units. I think there's also reasons of the design of the site, and I'm not saying that what Union Studios has prepared is inappropriate. You know, they have a good reputation, and I think they've designed a, an appropriate residential facility. But I'm talking about, again, the, the site itself, and whether the site itself warrants as many residential units as we have. And, and again, just like Kurt said, I don't know what the appropriate number is and how to get there. Although I think I'm perhaps hinting at it, and I'm looking for help.
So, you're, so you're looking at the units along the pond side?
Yeah. I'm definitely looking at what would be I and J. I think that's six units altogether? I'm definitely looking at I and J.
Well, J is within the 25, or a portion of it, am I correct?
I think I is within, a portion of I is within.
Well, within, there's two different things. We have the 25-foot no disturb zone, and then we have, and I think, so I think a portion of J is within the 25-foot portion, 25-foot no disturb zone, and then I think a portion of I is, is a riverfront.
So, I'm definitely looking at I because of the riverfront. I'm also looking at J because of its proximity, even though it isn't, excuse me, within the riverfront, because of its proximity. What, I think at one point were units one through six, and I think they've been renumbered closer to the pond, those duplexes.
Sorry, which ones again?
These three down here.
Okay, the yellow ones, okay.
Yeah. Now, those are duplexes, and I think they're also within the 25-foot no-activity zone. Am I correct?
That's the blue dotted line.
Are you asking that question?
Yeah.
Uh, no.
No?
So, that, that blue line you're looking at is the flood plain.
Okay.
So, it just touches the edge of the, on, no, none of them are in the
Well, a portion of the, the one on the left is, right?
No, no, that's the one that's furthest away from the 25-foot no-zone, no-touch.
Because it looks like on, on this, that the building one has part of the blue line going through it.
Yeah.
That's the architectural plan, you can't really use that for the boundary.
Building one, no, that is, the blue line is the flood zone. So, that's not the 25-foot no-touch, it's two different things. And the 25-foot no-touch does not have a buffer zone, so the buffer zone is off of the wetlands. You're correct in saying that building J does.
Right.
We discussed this at a previous meeting.
Yeah.
But the three duplexes, you know, the middle one is right on the edge, the one, and the one and two are quite a ways away, three and four are close, and then five and six are further away as well.
And those are the ones that, they will be filled?
Yes, yep, there's fill in those areas there to bring, to bring up to the, those are all blockouts.
They said I'm looking for help.
So, I am, I'm, I know we're not voting at this moment, but I just have to ask, so, I'm taking, I'm assuming that my argument, that increasing residential use, which is not permitted within a general industrial zone, is not, no one else is buying onto that.
Well, you know, it's, it's definitely a trade-off, and I, you know, I picked up on that early on, you know, what are we, what are we gonna get in return to this? The developer have some more residential, you know, non, have more, have non-residential property that he would offer it up to be changed to residential? I don't know how practical that is, or if he even does, would it really make a difference? I mean, there is good separation between that property and what I truly believe is industrial, you know, which is the woodworks and the other things over in that general direction. So, there is separation, but it would be better than a fence, you know, when you think about it. So, but if they're willing to cut it some, I see no harm in that. But one thing I will say is, when, when people in town talk about, we're over 10%, we're over 10%, you know, to get to that number, the lodge and the handler properties, which have hundreds of units, they all count towards that. Yet, in fact, 20, 25% of them are affordable, the rest are, they are what they are. So, it's really kind of a phony number when you, when you say we're at 10%, because they're not any more affordable than most.
That's really why I said we're really at around 6.7%.
Yeah, and you, and you gave the number to it, and that's, I've always kind of thought, how the hell does that become affordable, rental units that are not being reduced in rental?
So
So, we do need, so we do need to, I think, participate in being over 10%, even though we don't have to.
If I, if I and J and one, two, three, four, five, six are not there, how many units does that represent? Bill?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four total?
There's 46 right now, and you'd be eliminating 12. Did I do the math right?
Again, J is four, correct, Bill?
J is four, I is two, and the three duplexes.
Yep. So, Lorraine, that being the case, what's your follow-up on that?
Well, number one, I'm just thinking it would potentially provide the ability to have more parking.
Yeah, that's, that's important.
And make it so that, I think, you know, from a, the resident's standpoint, the ability to have guests or visitors might work better. Might open up a little bit more of the green space. Definitely takes I out of that conservation piece.
Kurt, any thoughts in that regard?
Well, I mean, like I said, I think that it's too, too dense as proposed. What, what number makes it right so that it's viable for the developer, which is his right to develop? And, you know, works well with the surroundings? And I don't know what that number is, but I know, I think it's too high now.
No, I agree, I mean, I understand, and if it's reduced, that would be for the better, there's no doubt about it. I don't have any problem with a proposal that would reduce it either, you know, an approval that reduces it as a condition, however we get to that point.
And like you said, eventually it's gonna get developed by somebody, it'll be something.
It'll always get developed at some point.
Ain't enough land around, so.
Right.
So, Kim, let me ask you this. Are your thoughts any different if we are to scale this back in sort of the manner we've been talking?
No.
Okay.
I'm having a great deal of trouble getting to a yes on this. I have, I have really wrestled because I do think that affordable housing, low-income housing, affordable housing is very important, and I have wrestled trying to find a way to get to yes on this, and I really have not. I mean, certainly, if it is going to be voted through as an approval, I certainly like the idea of what's being suggested with less units. But I'm not sure, even with that, it would get me to yes.
No, I understood, I respect that.
Just no, because it's 40B, it's unanimous?
No, it's majority.
It's majority?
Yeah, majority. Judy, you know what the question's gonna be? It's the same one that Paige asked yesterday, how do we, if, if we were to approve something with less units, how do we go from here to next month? What's the appropriate procedure to deal with it?
Are you asking in terms of drafting the decision?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Okay, so, I guess my only comment would be, I need some direction from the board as to what you want to do. Because if I have a sense of what you want to do, then I can draft a decision that responds to that. I don't think you want me sort of, you know, making up a decision for the board, so I think you need to kind of make a decision about, at least at a straw poll level, what where the board, where the board's comfort level is, if at all, with this project.
Do you need a revised plan in order to do that, or is it just enough to address my conditions?
I would suggest that it would probably be helpful to everybody if the board can give a sense to the applicant of what the board probably will find, you know, a range of okay, and ask the applicant if they would provide a revised plan that responds to that, because actually, as I'm sure you know, it would be a cleaner decision to have a plan of record associated with it that reflects what the board wants to approve, if you want to approve anything. So, yeah, it would be better to have a plan. If they won't prepare one, then it just makes drafting the decision much harder, but it certainly can be done. You know, if they don't want to give you a revised plan, I guess you then have to decide, do you want to just deny it? I'm not encouraging the board to do anything, I'm simply saying that the board kind of is in a position here to ask the applicant to cooperate, and if the applicant doesn't think it's in their interest to provide a revised plan that would make an approval decision an easier thing to make stick, the board either has to decide whether you want to have a decision that's really kind of cumbersome to write, or deny the application.
Without taking a vote, I think the consent
Without taking a vote, I think the consensus here is, with the exception of Kim, is to approve something that scaled back, and that would eliminate I and J. I think we're also talking about 1 through 6. I mean, what's, from your perspective, would the applicant be willing to provide us with a revised plan? And you really can't make a, I'm sure you can't answer that tonight. Yep. I'm sorry?
Ten unit, you're talking a total of 10 units?
Well.
Twelve.
Well, I don't think it's arbitrary at all.
No, do I, I mean, 52s, one could argue is arbitrary. Forty-six, one could argue is arbitrary. Comes down to, I'm sure, number crunching for profit and costs and everything else.
You might want to think about an estimated range of units that would be acceptable based on the interests that the local concerns and the interests that the board wants to protect, and view the plan that way.
Well, I think the way I'm looking at it is, the design of the site, um, to create a little bit more in the way of sort of greenery, open space, which I think ultimately is to, A, to the benefit of those who might be residing there, maybe not, but I'm just speculating in that regard, and it does create a bit of a buffer from, you know, from the pond and from the conservation land, so I think there are some benefits perhaps in that regard as well. That, that, that's where I stand, it's more, more a site, site design issue, an open space issue. Please? So let me go around the room, around the desk here, podium, whatever we are. Lorraine, what thoughts do you have?
I, I think that reducing the number of units would make this more, more, I guess, in my mind, realistic for flow of people who are gonna be living there. So, you know, I, I would like to see the number of units reduced, understanding there has to be some, uh, understanding of the impact that that has on the developer, you know? I mean, if, if, if there's a range that works, I just don't know what that is.
So, if I understand you're, what you're saying is you want to reduce, but you want to see what the developer's reaction is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Kind of simple, I mean, my mind is, why not approve it at 36 and let the developer decide what they want to do? Do they want to proceed, not proceed? They want to, uh, come back in with something else another time? Let them decide what they can do, or they may decide to just leave it alone.
Kurt?
Would be a 34, 34.
Yeah, 34 from.
The 34 number.
34.
Uh, can I have some courtesy to us, please?
Yeah, we're trying to do a good job up here for everybody, so you don't have to keep saying, make a decision. It's not very polite.
Kurt, go ahead.
So, I'd have, yeah, I, I would be more in favor of this if there were less units for a lot of reasons. I think the site is too dense, parking is a problem for me, uh, traffic is a problem for me. So, I would have a lot, it would be a lot easier for me to get on board with less units.
What about, you know, Lorraine's concern about seeing what the reaction would be from the applicant, from the property owner? In other words, you know, we express the fact that we want to reduce and see, I mean, I don't want to keep negotiating, I don't want to negotiate, it's not our responsibility to negotiate.
Yeah, that makes sense too, yeah.
Our responsibility to make a decision.
Okay.
So I think I'm where you are, David. Kim?
So, if I'm.
And, I love you, don't worry.
I will say, we generally agree on a lot of things, but when we do disagree, we do it with the utmost respect and affection. So, I understand your positions, uh, but let me make clear, I do understand your positions. So what you, we're talking about is getting rid of I, getting rid of J, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. That's what is being potentially discussed.
Well, that's the, of course, if that's the alternative plan they come back with to how to reduce, I don't think we're, well, maybe we'll, you know, specify if we approve that what's gonna go at the same time, if we approve at the lower number.
Okay. So would we possibly approve a lower, a lower number, and then, I think there might be an argument, I still stand by what I said before, that I don't know that I would be voting for this, but, um, I do agree that I and J are absolutely problematic, and I 100% think those should go.
I agree.
As far as 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, I certainly understand the argument concerning them, but is there an argument to be made where we give the developer a number, we'll say I and J absolutely gone, and then give, but then give them a lower number, and, I don't know, but then we don't want to.
That number's like kind of arbitrary, because it's like, how do we know if that makes it a viable project? We don't, we don't know that.
Right.
So it may just be a lower number that's reasonable, not a specific lower number.
So would we tell them, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, I and J, gone, and we're moving on from there, and they can take it or leave it? Is that what, is that what we're saying? Or do we give them a number and let them sort of possibly redesign it?
Or do we say a lower number and see what that looks like, you know?
I'm not comfortable saying a lower number.
But I'm not comfortable saying like a specific number either, do you know what it is? I don't know what that is.
It's sort of the same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I, I get what you're saying, Kim, it's not an easy one.
Yeah.
You also run it to the probable, you know, like you're negotiating, and I agree with Bonnie, it's, it's not our job to negotiate the size of a project, what do we know about
And Judy is shaking.
The economics associated with that.
Exactly.
And Judy's nodding. She agrees with you, Dave.
I mean, agrees with me.
Judy, Judy was nodding along with you.
So, I have a question, Barney?
Yeah, go ahead.
Is there a way to phrase it that if these spaces are not available for a configuration, can the developer come back with a different configuration?
I mean, like the lots aren't available, like those, like the.
Right.
Yeah, that's, all right, okay.
You know, let me, let me throw this out, I, I, I and J are gone, I mean, as far as I'm concerned. I, I could, I don't know, right, the word, right, the word, what the right word is entertain with, I'm not gonna live here. If 3, 4, 5, and 6 were gone, and 1 and 2 was, you know, one of your four-unit developments, so we really have nine four-units instead of eight, which makes 36, something like that would be acceptable to me. Uh, because 1 and 2 are the furthest from the floodplain.
No, 1, wait, do we have a different map? Because on mine, 1 is in the floodplain, touches it, the blue.
I thought 1 and, see, this one shows it that they're not.
There's some blue, oh, 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 oh.
Are 1 and 2 in the floodplain, Bill?
One?
Or 1 is?
Yeah, that building is.
It is?
Yes.
Okay. So, so all of them are in the floodplain?
No, just that building.
1 and 2 are in?
Is it 4?
1 and 2 are in, and 3 and 4 are just outside it, 5 and 6 are well outside it.
Okay.
Here's the.
So, I'm, maybe I'm looking at the reverse then, so if, if we were to take out 1, 2, 3, and 4, is there a way to make 5 and 6 a 4-unit? And that would be, that would reach 36 total, that would be acceptable number to me.
I think, I think that opens up a good amount of the space.
Yeah, it's more the lot covers than the actual building.
Right.
Numbers, yeah.
Yeah. And then the area 1, 2, 3, and 4 are is more, you know, green space, open space, whatever you want to call it.
Barney, may I chime in?
Yeah, please, I was about to say, Paige, you want to say something? Go ahead.
I do, I do, well, just having the benefit of listening to all of this, two things are coming out at me, as you grapple with numbers, and I think, Barney, your case, and I question whether the board feels the same way, I think some do, is that, I think you're basing the number rather than just an arbitrary lower number, you're basing it on the environmental, you know, the, the floodplain, the proximity floodplain, the riverfront, so I think that would guide any future, it's, I think you need to be clear about that, so that it would guide any future iteration of a plan, you know, it's not just a number, it's where that number exists, and then second.
Well, again, I think Paige, in, in, in response to that, whatever number we come up with, there has to be some factual basis for it.
Right, well, right, I, I could think I'm saying that you are making a factual basis, like, it's not just that you're just saying, oh, it's 36 or 34, you're basing it on facts. Um, the second thing I want to just make sure you, you consider if you do do that is Lorraine's point, and I know I've heard it from maybe you and others, is the, the parking issue. You know, if they are going to expand some parking, or designate an area for overflow parking, where will that be, and how does that relate to the environmental sensitive areas? So I just wanted to kind of call out those two factors that seem to have risen to the top.
Thank you, that's, yeah, it's appropriate point.
All right, if you can come up with that, we can get you a rough plan.
I'm sorry?
Settle on that, settle on that, we can get you a rough plan for that.
So, so, so a rough plan would be no I and J?
Right.
And?
Out of 36 units.
So there'll be some building where the duplexes are, that would be?
Come to a decision, we'll get you that plan.
Okay.
Yeah, whatever, whatever you decide, we'll get you a plan.
Okay.
Come to a consensus, we'll get you a plan, okay?
You good with that? Kurt? Lorraine?
Yes.
And again, I understand what your position is.
Yes, but you come up with a plan, but keeping in mind what Paige just said, with the, respect to the environmentally sensitive areas.
So here's what I heard, and just tell me if I'm wrong, eliminate I and J, and nothing can go in that area, because eliminate 1 through 4, and then 5 and 6 can become a 4-unit. Is that what I heard, was I correct?
And it doesn't have to be exactly where 5 and 6 are, you may, you know, whatever.
But you want it to be outside the 25-foot, no disturb, and you want it to be outside the floodplain.
And I would say, you know, that doesn't address the pocket, so take some of that now, extra land that you've now made available, let's see what you can do about pocket.
Then we'll have to submit you a revised list of waivers.
Well, most of them remain the same. Scott, do you have anything? I haven't been ignoring you.
No, you can ignore me all you want. I'm letting the board do their, their thing, so.
We, we got you teed up on a different matter, so.
Oh, yeah.
I'm not sure what to do next. Paige and Judy, um, I, did you hear, Bill? So.
Pretty much, yeah, it was a little bit difficult.
Okay, so, they're, they're talking about a, a plan, a revised plan, that would eliminate I and J, essentially eliminate 1 through 6, but have another building where, a 4-unit of buildings where, in, in the area where 1 through 6 are, where the duplexes are. I don't know if you have the plan, you know, near you, but 1 through 6 are duplexes near the, near the pond. So they would be eliminated as dup, or the plan they'll come in with would show they would be eliminated as duplexes, but would show another 4-unit building in that vicinity. So, go ahead, you're, you're about to ask a question.
So what is the impact on the total size of the project, just so I understand?
That would leave 36 units, that would result in 36 units.
Was it 34, 36?
36, 'cause the house is towed.
Oh, right, right, okay, okay.
No, 38, 38, 38 units, 'cause the house is towed.
Barney, um, to clarify, so, 1 through 4, 1 and 2 are in the floodplain, and 2, and, and 3 and 4 are not, but they're close to, so did you want to protect that area? Like, you mentioned those 4 units, do you want that, the new 4-unit one, how far away from that, you know, 'cause, we're gonna decide where to put it.
You know, I'll have to leave it, see what the plan is, I, I, you know, protect it as much as possible, but, but see what the plan is, see what they can come up with. I'll, I'll leave it to Mr. Buckley's ingenuity.
But to be clear, the reason you're, you're suggesting to get rid of 3 and 4 is its proximity to the floodplain, so it would be good guidance to them to kind of note that, so that they don't just put it right back, you know, where it kind of got removed from, so I just want, I just don't want to waste time and iterations, that was your concern.
Yes.
And the same with parking, I mean, I don't know what treatment parking would be, and I don't know whether the board would consider, um, alternative treatments, you know, does it have to be paved, does it have to, could it be impervious, does impervious really work up here? You know, how, how would that take it, what would the environmental impact be on that? You know, we don't want excessive parking, you can't pay for the day after Thanksgiving and on a shopping center, but what is a good idea, maybe it's so that there could be guests, and I don't know what that number is, I don't know if, Lorraine, that was your point, do you have a thought as to what you want? Just, just, I think the more clarity you provide to them, I know we want to defer to them, but I think that, you know, and then I guess my question to Judy is, is what happens with the process now in the sense of, is the hearing closed, and does it have to be, okay, so.
The board can't, the board can't take any evidence after the hearing closes, so the hearing would have to stay open. The board may want to look at the revised plan and say, this doesn't cut it, so, or they may say, fine, but I think, and also, there would be no be opportu, I can't talk, there would be no opportunity for the public to comment if the board wanted to hear public feedback about the revised plans. feedback about the revised plan, so you have to keep the hearing open to do this.
I just wasn't clear whether Dave's motion earlier was closing the hearing or if it was just closing tonight's discussion. I just wanted to be clear that there is, we know where we are, and I am sure Barney has his finger on that, but I want to be super clear on process.
Yep, good point.
Well, in regards to that matter, we'll have to, we'll have to have a letter, because it, we only extended it till tomorrow, to tomorrow.
So we, we can reopen the public hearing, can't we?
No, I, no, Mr. Chair, extend, continue the hearing.
I'm sorry?
Continue the hearing, don't close the hearing.
But we closed it.
I signed on after that, I was in another meeting.
Okay. But we can reopen it.
You can reopen.
We can reopen it. No. No?
You're going to have to.
Not right now.
You can reopen it, Mr. Chairman.
The way, the way Dave worded it, he said, close the public portion of the hearing.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so you closed it for purposes of taking public comment, is that my understanding?
Yeah.
Yes.
But the hearing is still open?
Yes.
Okay, that's a big difference, obviously. So I guess the, the question I have for the board then is, if you're going to take a look at an alternate plan, I assume that you're going to take public comment on that or not? Okay.
I think we're going to have to.
Right.
So do we continue until after we get a new plan?
If I may, Mr. Chairman. So under Robert's, Robert's rules, you only close the public portion. So you, as chairman, you can open the public portion again.
Yeah.
But we only extended the public portion until the 20th, tomorrow. So if Diana could have a letter, I'll sign it on behalf of Mr. Segue tonight. This whole thing hinges on.
Yeah, of course.
But this whole thing hinges on Mr. Segue's approval, and I'm, I gotta make the phone call tonight, and he might say, you. It is what it is.
So.
But we'll assume we're going to proceed.
All right, do we extend then to February 16th?
That's our next hearing date.
I'm sorry?
February 16th is our next hearing date.
Yeah.
So, to be clear, Mr. Chair, there's really no such thing as closing the public portion.
Please, we need to hear her, please.
Hearing is either open or it's not.
Judy, because you already, we couldn't hear you.
I said, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. There's really no such thing as closing the public portion of the hearing, the hearing is either open or it's not. What the board can do, and many boards do, is choose on a particular night not to take public comment, because the board wants to discuss the project and ask the applicant questions. But the hearing, if the hearing hasn't been closed, the hearing isn't closed, so you just need to continue the public hearing.
Okay.
So should Dave withdraw that motion?
Just for the record, it was to.
Close the public portion?
Close the public portion of the hearing, what Dave's motion had been.
Right.
Say that again.
Essentially, it's just saying the board's not going to take public comment tonight. That's really all it means.
So this would extend to February 16th, date in which the public hearings to conclude? Sorry? Judy?
I'm sorry, did I, did you speak to me, Mr. Chair, didn't you?
You know, right, right now, the public hearing is open only until tomorrow.
I understand, so you need a continuance, you need a letter authorizing a continuance.
Till February 16th?
Well, I would certainly do it a little bit past that, I mean, you know, if we're going to discuss and vote that night, I, I mean.
Whatever.
At least till the next day. I mean, obviously, you have 40 days once you've closed the hearing, so I suppose it doesn't matter, but usually my boards will continue it a day or two after the hearing.
It's Saturday, why don't we do it to that next Monday? No, there's all 30 days in February.
There's not 30 days.
It's February 28th.
So Barney, while we wait for this, can we talk about what our expectations are? So you're expecting a new plan? You have a certain date? Are you, are we going to have to go through environmental partners reviewing it again? You know, we're going to have to go through public hearing, I mean, it's almost, I don't want to say starting over, but it's, what steps are you going to have, and, and schedule-wise, how do you see this playing out?
First of all, I have to say, if, you know, this is acceptable to Mr. Segue.
Well, if it's, yeah.
If it's acceptable to him, Mr. Buckley will come up with a revised plan.
Right, but I think Paige's point is, if you get a revised plan, are you going to need input from your professional consultants in reviewing that or, or not? Am I, Paige, I think I'm with you on that, right?
I don't think so. I don't think we need it. No.
Okay.
I'm going to say no. And, and we're going to make the decision on it on February 16th.
Okay.
I wanted to make a decision on it tonight, but we'll make a decision on February 16th. So, I, I think your charge is to speak with Mike, see what his appetite is, knowing that what we're talking about, well, you know what we're talking about. And if he's okay with it, he'll come back with a revised plan, and we'll discuss that at the February 16th meeting.
We'll have it to you at least a week in advance.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chair, should I assume that you want me to continue working on a decision that would assume approval by the board, so that you have something to discuss, or do you want me to wait?
It doesn't hurt to do it, because I think you've seen that at least four of us, two of whom are voting members, are in favor of it, you know, with the, with the reduction that we talked about. Judy, did we lose you?
No, I'm here.
Okay. So I, I think it would be appropriate to come, you know, to prepare something that would be reflective, and I, and I've got some, you know, revisions of some of the conditions that I would get to you, or some things that I would like to see added to it, and, you know, we can approve or disapprove, you know, both that night. And again, that's, that all depends on whether you come back with something, you know, with Mike's okay on it.
So conceivably, you might close the hearing that night and then vote?
Yes. I wanted to, well, that, that was my intention, that we reach a consensus tonight and, and vote on a decision on, you know, on the written decision on February 16th. So I think we can still, we can still do that. You know, with, with the revised plan in front of us. So, yes, to answer your question, I think it would be, if, if you can, to, to prepare it as if this is what we're going to approve.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I want to take a motion to continue.
I move that we continue this hearing until?
February 16th.
February 16th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn the meeting?
I move we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?